Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission Public Hearing of Objections that's being held for the Minister of Environment and Local Government. Pardon me, actually, the Minister of Local Government and Local Government Reform. This is a hearing to hear public comment and have a presentation on a proposed amendment to the St. David Rural Plan Planning Regulation. Pardon me? And this public hearing will follow a process which we're going to lay out now. Alright, so here's the introduction. The regulation is to the St. David area Rural Plan Regulation. And it's 20 SDA 2502 and 20 SDA 2503. So that's the amendment and the terms and conditions that are being considered. My name is Alex Henderson. I'm the Planning Director with the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission, and I'm a professional planner. So tonight's agenda is as follows. We may not go to 7:30, but we're going to begin now and go from here till 7:30. But we start with me doing the presentation on the application background, process, and the regulation. Then we go to you to hear from you about your comments about the application. These are what are collected and sent to the minister in a transcription. And that's about the majority of the time we're trying to spend dealing with your comments. So after everybody's had a chance to say their comment about this application or a question, the applicant will have an opportunity to respond to those and respond to any questions that you have. We will also respond, I say "we," the commission through me, response to any questions about the act, regulation, or the process. After the public hearing is concluded, and you will have a time period after this to send your comments in if you wish to still. So we had an application that was received on November 8, 2020, so late last year. The application was reviewed and analyzed by planning staff. The initial application was provided to the province for their review and intake. They send it to every relevant provincial department that might have some sort of stake in the proposed development. Be it Wawa permits for environmental setbacks from water, be it a DTI if there's an impact on any access, so forth. It is comprehensive, and it can take several months to complete, and as it did in this case. And we compiled those comments in the plan report which was made available prior to this meeting. So after we get the comments, we make a revision to the proposed amendment. We also send this off now to the First Nation and the Local Service District Advisory Committee. They're consulted for a period of 30 days after the province and the provincial departments had a look at it. And then the general public, you, are being requested for your views. And we advertise this, there's a requirement how we advertise, we have to do it in a newspaper. But we also do a mail-out, in this case, we did mail it to property owners within 200 meters of the proposed development site. So you would have received, if you're in 200 meters, a notice in your mail. So as I said, the transcript of this meeting and recording is going to be sent to the minister for their records when they're going to consider this. Also, after this, the commission's planning committee, the Plan Review Adjustment Committee, will review this and give a technical opinion to the minister. So after this meeting, you have a two-week window which you can also send your comments. So if you're not able to articulate everything tonight, that's fine. You can put it into a letter and then send it off to the minister at that time. The six-month window that is going to occur will conclude on October 6. That's the date, six months from the first ad that went into the newspaper. And that's the deadline the minister has to make his decision on this. This, I'm just going to pause for a minute and make sure everybody who's in the audience is able to, it looks like we have four other people in the audience. And I think that's about accurate with how many people pre-registered. So if you're having trouble tonight and you can't hear me very well, we're going to make a recording of this available on YouTube so you can see this after. I'm going to resume now to the presentation and go to the next part. For the background, property is just over two hectares in size. The applicant initially was not aware that they required a rezoning for their proposed campground development. They had their electrician apply for the waiver. The electrician only indicated that they were upgrading a panel. So the planning commission, the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission, did not know that a campground development was going on. And so that miscommunication led to us having to follow up with them after the development has occurred. So this case, the septic system is already installed and approved by the correct departments. They had power and well to the site. We also made sure, after we found out about this campground, we followed up the applicant to make sure that they were aware that they needed to rezone prior to actually opening their development, making it used as a campground. We looked at this proposal with the applicant and concluded that really you needed a new zone. There wasn't a zone that would accommodate for a recreational vehicle campground. The applicant's property is currently in the rural zone. And the proposal that the applicant settled on was to rezone to a brand-new zone called the tourist commercial zone. And that's because there is, well, there's three zones, four zones, sorry, in St. David. There's the rural zone, which is the predominant zone, there's the commercial zone, which is predominantly along the 170. There's an intensive agriculture zone, that's for industrial-scale farming, that's in the ridges. And then there's a quarry zone for the quarry off Strang Road. But none of those zones could accommodate this. There's also the 30-meter limited development zone around the St. Croix River. And this is actually tied to a different regulation, but it does have some bearsome relevance on this application. There is two existing RVs on the site, and they are located in that 30-meter setback. This proposal is for eight additional RV sites, but they are to be located further back from the St. Croix River. I'll show this in the site plan coming up next. First, we're going to go through the objections that were received on this application through correspondence. This was just some of the letters that were received from neighbors. There's concern about the right-of-way and the impact of extra traffic, and whether or not Moody Lane is sufficiently safe or legal access. There is concerns that potentially this development will lead to noises and impacts from extra children, parties, dogs. Concerns that this development might lead to excess smoke from campfires, littering, vandalism, trespassing. Concerns that this development could lead to a general loss of peace and quiet. There's concern about the loss of trees on the property in question, loss of wildlife susceptible to flooding erosion. This is what's being proposed to be rezoned. So this is the applicant's whole property. As you can see, the yellow 30-meter buffer from the river is unchanged. That's still on the applicant's property, but the remainder, rather, is being proposed to be rezoned to the tourist commercial. This is Moody Lane. We did a site visit with the applicant sometime there in November and reviewed it. And there is some challenges with this access. It wouldn't be appropriate for a high level of traffic. Development like this can be acceptable where you are doing seasonal, lower-impact recreational resource-type development that doesn't need a year-round paved road. But the access is a point of concern, and we'll be talking about this later in the terms and conditions that are proposed. This is the site that was prepared for the sites, the eight RV sites. As you see, it's already prepared. There's hydro seeding. Some of the, I think, comments related to flooding have to do with these revolutes that happened due to a rain event sometime in the late last year. And some of this hydro seeding has not yet been able to be established. One thing which planning staff noted when we're going through this application and some of the comments is there's, I guess, some clarification needed as to what type of zone this is. So this is a rural zone. It is not a residential zone. Rural actually allows for a wide variety of uses currently. So currently, there is an opportunity for someone to develop livestock operation to a smaller scale under 50 animal units. So one cow equals one animal unit, for example. You could do aquaculture uses. There's the Oak Bay Fish Hatchery that's permitted use in the zone. You could do residential, of course. You could do institutional facilities. You could do things like portable sawmills, furnish production, which is under the forestry use definition. So it's quite a wide variety of uses that are allowed here, some of which could have impacts. But because this is not something that's allowed clearly a recreational vehicle campground, then we have to go through rezoning. And when you go through zonings, you see the green is the rural, so what it is currently. When you go through rezonings, then there's an opportunity to evaluate all the impacts. And so that's what we're going to be looking at tonight with this planning analysis that I prepared. When we look at an amendment to a plan, we have to look at the plans objectives and the overall planned objectives for the whole planning area, for the whole of St. David. And the objectives are follows: to encourage compatible development, protecting the resource base, and preserving quality of life. So you note that there's a balance there, protecting resource base, so what your economic advantages are, while preserving quality of life. It's not one over the other. To encourage future development that's in character with the current land use patterns. So is it a type of development that is indicative of the area? It may not be something that has happened before, but something that is like things that are in existence. To allow residents to actively participate in the process of guiding development applications. So this is what we're doing tonight, that communities be invited to comment on this and have influence on this application. To avoid land use conflicts that would cause negative social or economic consequences. Again, it's that balance there between the opportunity for someone to develop their private property in a way that provides economic opportunity, income, as well as thinking about the social impacts that that could have on neighbors. To encourage development that's in best interest of the community and fits with the overall appearance of the area. Making sure that the development is not going to be something that is negative for the whole planning area, that is going to be way out of scope, we're not talking about skyscraper or a smokestack here, something that doesn't fit in St. David. But what is the development doing? What is it trying to achieve? Does it fit with the general character of the area? And that's the last one, preserve rural character while accommodating new and existing residents who desire a good quality of life offered by rural areas. So when we're inviting in new development, you also need to think about future residents as well as making this place a good place to live and not compromising the reason why people live there. And that's really, I think, when you get to the issue some of the neighbors have raised, that point to think is what a lot of people focus on. We don't want to compromise people's quality of life. So we talked about the balance that needs to happen between quality of life, economic opportunity, and the rural character. So you can do rezonings like this. A minister is the one who approves it or not, but if the minister's going to do it, they have to be carefully considering all these things. So it's important that if we're going to allow campground that furthers economic opportunity, and that's aligned with the rural character of the planning area, that it does not unduly impact neighboring properties. So development of any kind on any property has some kind of impact. Either visually, you see a new house there, smell, if it's a barn, for example, that's permitted. But we have to make sure it's not undue and outside of the scope and character of that zone or that area for the planning area. If there's a viable way to limit these through terms and conditions, then they should be imposed. The campground proposal also aligns broadly with the objectives St. Croix Quarter Rural Plan and Management Plan. So one of the things that we're saying, there's actually two planning regulations here. One, which is not being amended, which is the St. Croix Quarter Plan, and one which is proposed to be amended, which is the St. David Planning Area Rural Plan. Now, with regard to the St. Croix plans, it's important to look at that because this is about proximity to the river. And when thinking about those plans, they actually call for a mixture of recreational and tourism types of uses along the river, ones which are low-impact, and I talk about this in the plan report. But the St. Croix Waterway Commission has a management plan that goes into greater detail about the types of the development they'd like to see along the river. And this has been in existence since the 90s. We have seen a number of campgrounds develop in recent decades, and sites which are proactively planned, they attain their necessary permits, they can be beneficial to rural communities. They offer an affordable tourism experience or recreation activity which promotes economic activity and social well-being. People connect with each other at these sites. There's also a existing campground, which is existing non-conforming, the Route 170, which is the Oak Bay Campground, this right next to the provincial park. The proposal in question is 10 sites, so it's not overly large in comparison to the Oak Bay Campground. Staff opinion, they would not change the rural character significantly, being minimal. We have been in positions where we've rejected applications for campgrounds, even fewer sites in this, where the zone or the proposed location would be completely inappropriate. And sometimes this is a case where you have a very high concentration of rural residential. Here, we looked at the concentration, and it is not as significant as other sites we've seen in our region. So 10 dwellings in a half a kilometer diameter. So when looking at this and thinking about those 10 dwellings and the potential for impact, the minister may attach comprehensive terms and conditions to ensure future potential land use conflicts be mitigated. And these terms and conditions are not suggested. They are requiring, they are binding, and they have the force of law. So they're significant if you are to have terms and conditions imposed on the development, and you don't follow them. You could lose your rezoning, have to revert your land use back to what it was originally. As we talked about, this proposal requires the creation of a new zone, tourist commercial, and zoning a piece of land to that zone. So I'm going to go through what the amendment would look like with that. It's also worth noting that if this is approved, the minister would be establishing new plan policies that set criteria for any other future campgrounds. So it's not uncommon for people to ask about these type of developments. But if this was to be approved, there's kind of a process to be figured out for those other ones. They would still have to go through this exact same process, be reviewed by all the provincial departments, have neighborhood comments, and go through the whole impacts. And I'm going to list those criteria that would have to happen for any other future sites if there was any other proposed for St. David. So here is the policy amendments that would be required for this rezoning. Policy to encourage commercial development that provides local opportunities. It's a policy to encourage commercial uses to locate an existing commercial developed areas in proximity to Route 170. So this was not specified as Route 170 earlier. This would be a change. It's a policy to consider low-impact tourist commercial uses to locate in proximity to the St. Croix River, subject to an amendment to this plan. So we're not pre-zoning anything. Nobody can just set up a campground like this because of this amendment. But this would allow for a process. Let's look at it each and every time, and the minister may approve it or not. So that's new. It's proposed that commercial uses, having outdoor storage maintain screening buffers between themselves and adjacent residential properties and public roadways. And it's proposed that terms and conditions, sorry, it's proposed that commercial uses require rezoning will be evaluated relative to the following items. Compatibility with surrounding neighborhood. Considerations, noise, dust, smell, lighting, odor, storage, sorry, outdoor storage, scale and nature of the operation, visual buffers, topography, soils, drainage, floodplains, outdoor storage, air-water-soil pollution, and any other aspect of the proposed development that could pose a danger to residents or contaminate the environment. So any other application, including this application, has to go through this analysis of how it has impact on any of these things and can they be mitigated with terms and conditions if it's going to be approved. And if not, then it should be turned down. That would be the analysis that the minister would have to make and be responsible for. So looking at what it would do to the list of zones, we're just adding in tourist commercial there at the last one. Sorry, I don't think the numbering is correct here. It's just all listed as AAA, but it's A, B, C, D, E. So adding the actual zone, the tourist commercial zone, it's pretty simple. All that's different about the tourist commercial zone versus the existing commercial zone is that you could do a campground. There's actually a definition in the rural plan already for a campground. It's just not permitted or listed anywhere. So it seemed to be contemplated by the drafters of the St. David Rural Plan, but it was never listed anywhere. So that means that if it's not listed anywhere as permitted, it would be subject to an amendment. So in some ways, this is something that the planners who wrote the plan contemplated at the time. So basically, everything you can do in the regular commercial zone would be permitted. In addition, you could do a campground. I'm going to go through more detail what that would mean for this property, Moody Lane, because that is not exactly going to be the case for this property based on how this would have to go in our analysis. And this is just a part of the amendment, which means that that portion of his property, Mr. Stafford's property, Mr. and Mrs. Stafford, sorry, I should say, is being rezoned from rural to tourist commercial. So these are the proposed terms and conditions that staff at the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission see would be necessary to be compliant with the rural plan and make sure the rezoning works. That a minimum five-meter landscape buffer be established between the lands with the property identification number. And I can read those PIDs, but those are the PIDs that are immediately north to this proposal. So I can go and show that, what that looks like on the site plan in a moment. That the property's main uses be limited to a campground, a maximum of 10 campsites for travel trailers, and one single dwelling unit. So we are talking about what could be allowed in this property if this amendment be approved. Well, it's that. You could max 10 campsites for travel trailers and one single unit dwelling. There can't be additional campsites added or any more dwelling units added because the density of population here is important, making sure that it's not overburdening that Moody Lane especially, and also creating even more impacts. And then a maximum of 10 travel trailers may be stored or located in the lands here and be rezoned at any one time. This is important for enforceability. If we go to the site, and let's say it's not even the current owners but future owners, and they say, "Well, we're just storing 20 more trailers. Nobody's using those." We need to make sure that we only have 10 RVs on that site at any one time for enforceable purposes and to make sure that we have compliance. Four, that priority carrying out any development within 30 meters that are near a landmark of St. Croix River, a building or development permit be attained in compliance with any applicable regulations. Now, you can modify structures in the St. Croix Quarter, but you cannot add additional ones. So making sure that that is followed, and if we have inappropriate development in that buffer, well, that could jeopardize this entire rezoning, and we want to strongly discourage it. Five, that any garbage shall be contained in an animal-proof receptacle and be appropriately sent to a landfill. So not create noxious odors for adjacent properties, attract wildlife, or cause environmental hazard. So with anything where you have multiple users on a site, we want to make sure it's orderly, clean, tidy, not causing littering, which I think was a concern of some of the neighbors, or garbage being strewn about by wild animals at nighttime. Six, that exterior lighting be shielded and directed downward, so as to limit light pollution and not preclude nearby residents from enjoying the view in the night sky. Now, I think this is pretty standard now for MB Power to have this in the power poles, but we don't want to see any new lighting brought in that's going to create a haze of any kind for nighttime lighting. And what I've seen so far, it looks appropriate for the site, so basically limiting that to that type of lighting. Seven, that no-making-a-noise likely to cause a public nuisance or otherwise disturbing habitants shall occur between the hours of 11:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. That was important because I think there was a concern about noise and disturbing quality of life. And so this condition is to make sure that this is not a party campground, that this is a quiet and just a less rowdy sort of environment. This won't, if it becomes anything other than that, again, the whole rezoning could be rejected and revoked, and the whole thing would have to cease. So that is an important piece, and compliance with this will be necessary. Eight, that the current access or any replacement thereof to the development shall be maintained by the campground operator in order to provide reasonable access to the lands herein being rezoned. Making sure that that site has appropriate legal access through a right-of-way, which there is a right-of-way in existence. But if there is a greater impact on that, the operator will need to keep that in good condition. And we have an understanding that that is the plan of the operator. But that will be required to make sure that they're maintaining their access appropriately for the development. And if there's any new access, if there was a new right-of-way acquired, that they would make sure they go through the proper channels through the Department of Transportation Infrastructure. And 10, the last proposed condition would be that the development would be in substantial conformity to the site plan as scheduled D2. I'm going to show that schedule here in a moment. And again, this is what I've talked about already with the regard to breaching any terms and conditions and the serious nature of that, meaning the lands herein may lose the right to use the said lands as herein specified in the minister regulation. And the use of lands may revert to those of the previous zone, namely rural. So as I said, this is part of the regulation and would be part of the enforceable nature of the terms and conditions. So this is that site plan schedule which I refer to. This is how the campground would have to be developed, and it couldn't be developed unless it was in substantial conformity to this. You have the eight sites numbered, 1 and 2 by the river, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, behind the current garage. And there's some location for campground amenities beside the garage there. There's also the septic tanks that are in that same location. So they're already in the ground in existence and have been approved for the type of development that he has here proposed. So I'm going to go back just over our agenda quickly. We went through the number one. Now it's number two. So what I want to talk about this is the ground rules quickly. So when we're doing public comment, it's important to think about two things. One, we're here to talk about the proposed amendment and the regulation and anything to do with the rezoning and the property. We're not here to talk about personal attacks or talking about some things which are not related. And if you are going off-topic or going into that kind of thing, I may have to mute you or take the chair position and move to the next person. Additionally, I would like people to keep their comments to a maximum of five minutes. If we're kind of repeating ourselves and someone else makes your point, you could just say that person before me made my point, and I'd just like to echo what they said, and that's totally sufficient. It's not about the volume of comments that repeat themselves, but it's about bringing up new points which haven't been considered yet. So after that, applicant will have a chance to respond. And then I have a chance to respond to any questions about the Community Planning Act, regulations like the rural plan, and the process. And then we conclude the public hearing, and we'll send the transcript off to the minister. Alright, so I'm going to now begin turning the meeting over to people who are in attendance. And I'm just going to go through the list as it appears. It looks like we have Tamara Fall, who wishes to speak. And I can just go through everybody here. It looks like we just have three others who are calling in or over Zoom. So I'll go first with Tamara. So Tamara, you are able to speak now, so if you're on mute yourself, I can hear you. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm wondering how the staff feels that it will be a low-impact for, we're talking a, you mentioned a half-kilometer diameter. We're talking about a tenfold increase in the population of this quarter, of this half-mile, tenfold increase. of this quarter, of this half mile, um, tenfold increase, because right now we have three, two, three families that live out there, now we're talking about thirteen families that live in this same tiny space. Um, that's ten times the people, ten times the noise, ten times the traffic, ten times the trash dumped. How can that possibly be low impact? That is by the very definition of high impact. Now with a boat launch, there's likely to be ten times more boats and canoes and skeetos and raptors and kayaks. And then of course, ten times the fishermen, ten times the hunters. Um, it took my dogs three years to acclimate to the residents in this area, so they have learned who belongs here and who doesn't. It took them three years of me working with them not to bark excessively at our neighbors. They bark a little, oh yeah, that's who that is, okay, and they shut up. With strangers on the bay, this isn't even over by the campground, they'll be all on the bay all day long during the summer. All day, every day, strangers on the bay, I will never get my dogs to shut up. I will never, but no trainer could do that, the dogs, I live at the end of a dirt road, I'm alone, I have the right to protect myself. My dogs alert me when there is a stranger in proximity to my property, especially if there's some hooting and hollering and nonsense going on. Um, that, you know, this, this whole idea is incompatible with the peace and the tranquility um, of, of this, of this region, we are mostly retirees. We came, we saved all our lives to be able to come out here and buy here in a peaceful, quiet place. A, a group of partiers and holidayers and drunks and uh campfires, and this is not in um, either that is not uh compatible with what we moved here for, okay? Um, there's also a serious concern about bonfires in the bay, I live on a cliff right on the water. My cliff is supported by driftwood and dead trees. They hold the bay back, they hold erosion back as it is, I think it's something like a foot um, every twenty years or something, it's eroded anyway, no matter with all of this, uh, this in place. I'm worried about campfires, that, the campfires in the campground, they're going to run out of wood, so then they'll start um, coming down to the bay and dismantling the woodpile that's holding my, my cliff together. Okay, so I'm going to have increased erosion, increased bonfires right on the bay, increased barking from the dogs at the bonfires on the bay. Um, you know, I mean, it's just, it's just this, this awful, awful uh future that I'm seeing here that, that will destroy the rural character. I wanted to um reference the existing Oak Bay Campground, that's on 170, we, we deal with it because it's on 170. There are fireworks, there are parties, there's hooting and hollering, there's cars starting and revving engines at all hours of the night, okay? We don't complain, that's in a commercial zone, all right, this is not a commercial zone, all right? Um, what else, we don't, we don't need a tourist commercial zone. We have the commercial zone and that can be used, uh, that can be looked at as, as for tourism, we have Airbnb. We have all kinds of places to stay in the area, um, we don't need any tourist, uh, tourist commercial zone. Um, uh, let me see, if I, if I could think of anything else, oh, uh. All right, um, yeah, I just, uh, you know, it just speaking strictly on the quality of life. Uh, this will unduly impact this quieter re- retirement zone. At, you know, I mean, at the very least, we're increasing the population of this tiny space to ten times what's already here, okay? We have two or three people, we figure two or three people will come into every one of those uh, uh, RV spots. So that's ten times the population in a, in a half mile. That, that's crazy, it's unacceptable, there are other things, if this individual wants to bring economic boom to the area. I strongly suggest considering a micro cultivation license on that property.
Tamara, can you uh just summarize in, in twenty seconds?
Yes, um, there are serious negative consequences for this, we don't need a, uh, oh, of TC zone, a tourist commercial zone, um, I'll never get my dogs to shut up. So ask anybody in the area, they will agree if there's strangers on the bay and I will, and I make my living from my dogs. So it isn't a possibility for me to get rid of the dogs, I can't bring them inside the houses hot in the summer. Uh, they are quiet now, they are accepting now of the people that are on the bay, they will not accept strangers, period, there's no way to train them otherwise.
Thank you. We're going to go on to um, Richard, Richard, I'm going to promote you to a speaking role, so you might have to unmute. If, uh, here. Just give you a moment here, Richard, so if you wanted to speak, um.
We're just connecting, am I connected now?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
All right. I don't have the problems of others, and then my biggest problem was a couple of weeks ago, uh, I heard all these rumors about what was happening and that I didn't like. Uh, what Fred is doing down there in Shirley is what they planned on last year, I knew about that, I have no problem with what they're doing whatsoever. Uh, over the years, our family's been there sixty odd years, uh, going back and forth. The people that had the cottages out on the point, there was no problem with them, and I don't expect any problem with Fred and the people with there. So as far as I'm concerned, it's an okay situation with me, I'd like to see anybody that has dogs not to let them go running wild. Because we have a lot of whitetail deer there, and we do have some neighbors that have dogs that chase the deer now. So that was all, I, I have no complaints. I, after I talked to you and after I talked to Fred, I got all the facts and I'm okay. So that's all I've got to say about it.
Okay, all right, sounds good, Richard, we're, uh, we're going to go to the next person then.
All right.
All right, so we have phone number um ending in six zero seven four, so I'm going to promote you to a speaking role. If you um need to unmute. I believe you dial star six or star nine, I'm going to give you a moment. Because it may take you a moment to figure that out, so dial star six or star nine, if you're calling in. We'll just keep waiting a moment, that's, uh, that's all right. Uh, it does look like you're trying to speak, uh, oh, you did the raise hand, so it must be the other one, whatever you did, it's the other one. I apologize, I don't remember which uh, uh, dial code it is. There we go, we can hear you.
Oh.
Hi.
Hi, I'm, we've listened to all the conversations so far at this point. Uh, there's one thing that we, we seem to have missed upon is the trespassing. There's, there's no guidelines, there's no fencing to stop anybody from traveling into our property, which is a joint to this upcoming place. Um, property values will go down. I, I mean, you try to resell something next door to a, a party child, good luck. Um, I'm just a little upset by some of this, we've been here for over twenty years and it's been peaceful and quiet. Uh, this is not going to be this, a future, this is going to be a problem in the future, we're not going to get quiet anymore. And I've seen trailer parks, I've been to trailer parks, I know how loud, how loud they can become. And how come they can get out of, out of, out of control easily by drinking? And as I said, there's no fence or anything like that between those properties that are joined to it. Um, what's to stop these people from coming into our property? Walking around our property, I mean, you know, and they got a cigarette, boom, up goes the light, and then we got a fire. And it wouldn't take long to reach the house. So I, I, our main concerns are, are something along those lines. I mean, I, I don't know, that's about all I have to say at this time.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name, what was your name?
Oh, Raymond Weeks.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, Raymond. That looks like everybody who's calling in who's not the applicant, I'm going to now go to the applicant to speak. So Fred, you just might have to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, yes.
Alex, I don't really have anything to add, uh. Uh, I think you've said it all, I'd like to thank Dickie Glad for support. And uh, as far as fires and things like that, uh, this campground will, will have uh regulations and rules and uh, everyone will be expected to follow them. Dogs won't be allowed to be off-leash, campfires will all have to be in approved, uh, uh, fire pits. And uh, as far as people kayaking on the bay. I mean, I hope to see a lot of people, a lot more people kayaking on the bay. It's, it's great exercise and that's why we live in, in, in the, on the East Coast, uh, so that we can enjoy those sorts of activities. I'll let Ms. Follett's uh comments speak for themselves. Uh, there's not much I can say about things like that. But as, as for Mr. Weeks, uh, he has got a big dog up there, I, I went over to talk to him one time and I didn't dare go any ways near his property because I was afraid of his dog and he could barely hold on to it himself, so I don't think he has to worry too much about anybody trespassing on this property. And I'll make very sure that uh, that, that no one does. This will be more or less a, 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 uh, an RV park for, for seniors, there won't be children around here, there's nothing for kids to do. So unless it's grandchildren visiting their grandparents, that shouldn't be an issue. And uh, there's people sneaking around stealing stuff now, so that, that's, that's not an issue that will be brought about simply by this campground becoming a reality. And uh, I guess that's about all I have to say, Alex.
All right, well, thank you, Fred. So I'm going to just here, uh, go over my notes if I see anything related to planning or the process. Think there was reference to the uh population density and doubling the population now. Uh, there's various ways the population can grow um in different scenarios. And I think the point that planning staff was just raising there was um, more having to do what is on the ground now. Um, but there's all kinds of potential people have, uh, that don't have to go through rezoning to greatly increase the population. So um, this is the type of thing we have to look at with um, uh, we have to look at this development proposal in the context as it is now, and if it develops, uh, what would it be developing around? And that was more what the comment was about, it was not about uh, um, uh, that this wouldn't have a pop, uh, increase in the population or not. More of the comments were, were similar to what I think was received in the written correspondence. Um, and I don't think I necessarily have to address those from planning, uh, regulation or act point of view, so um, I think at this point we can conclude, and what, again, I just would like to reiterate. If uh folks have a uh need to write to the minister directly um, to outline more of the concerns that they haven't had a chance to, to say tonight, or you know somebody else who tried to participate tonight and somehow the technology didn't work out. I encourage you to uh, to write a letter, you can send it to our office at three three Wall Street in Saint Stephen, we are, we can pick it up at the door. You can mail it to us, email it to me at alex.henderson@snbsc.ca. And I will make sure it becomes part of the package the minister gets for his decision, so again, this could be uh, some time before a decision, but i- sometimes it can just be a matter of weeks um, for certain types of developments. The minister could make it happen very quickly, so um, eh, one thing or another could happen and I don't know what, what will exactly uh transpire, so just like to thank everybody who participated tonight, and again, uh, all your comments are recorded and are going to be part of the package to the minister, so everybody, thank you for participating and have a good night.